Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, and ask the clerk for roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Scuzzola.
Here.
Councilmember Fertado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
Mayor Bybee.
Present. At this time, I'd like to invite Cheryl Walsh from the Shawn M. Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation to lead the pledge of allegiance in recognition of a donation that we'll be receiving later in the meeting. Everyone stand, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, thank you, the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just hold on a moment. So, as I mentioned, the pledge was led by Cheryl Walsh of the Shawn M. Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation. Specialist Shawn Walsh was a military police soldier in the California National Guard when he was killed in Afghanistan in 2011. Cheryl Walsh and her family established the Shawn M. Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation with the main goal of assisting law enforcement agencies to establish a K-9 team in memory of Shawn. The Shawn M. Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation mission is to provide grants to law enforcement agencies in need of financial support to establish or maintain their K-9 teams. Shawn's K-9 has provided K-9s through their grants to numerous agencies regionally, including Campbell PD, who received K-9 Lucas and K-9 COA through the program. Thank you very much for leading the pledge, and I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation.
I just want to thank the City of Campbell and the city council for recognizing the value that canines bring to their community. I've said it before and say it all the time, 90% of what these dogs do have nothing to do with their teeth. It's all about their nose and their personalities and their ability to unite a community and bring them together to support their police department. So, thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. I know Shawn would be proud. He actually, we grew up on the border, he grew up on the border and used to go to Campbell Community Center skateboarding all the time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sure.
Just wanted to comment, and thank you very much for this donation, and thank you for honoring the memory of your son, as well as his service to the country. It's very much appreciated, and your lifelong sacrifice is very much respected as well. Thank you.
Anyone? Okay. We'll now move on to special presentations and proclamations. Item one is a proclamation declaring the month of March 2023 as Youth Arts Month in the City of Campbell. And we have online, Sophia Fojas, the arts coordinator for Artspiration, the Arts Education Initiative at the Santa Clara County Office of Education. Hello, Sophia.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Bybee, and members of the Campbell City Council for your support of arts education in our schools by presenting Youth Arts Month proclamation tonight. My name is Sophia Fojas. I'm the arts coordinator for the county office, and I lead Artspiration, which is the initiative that began in 2007 around arts education. In my role, I support districts implementing a comprehensive arts education plan, co-manage the Arts Connect Grant with Silicon Valley Creates, co-present the Silker for Arts and Education with San Jose State, and conduct the Young Artist Showcase, which currently houses the largest collection of youth art in any county office in the state. Youth Arts Month began in 1961 by the National Art Education Association to recognize art as a critical part of a well-rounded child's education. The goal was encouragement and commitment to the arts by students, community organizations, businesses, governmental agencies, and individuals. Now, in 2023, research shows us the power of the arts in developing a path to creative self-expression, instilling a sense of belonging, and developing perseverance through adversity. The positive effects of arts participation in schools are increased attendance, higher academic achievement, greater confidence, and higher civic engagement. We need now what the arts bring more than ever, that is joy, creativity, and connection for each and every child and each and every educator in our schools. On behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and as a child who learned the violin in the fourth grade and wanted to become a music teacher in the public schools, thank you for recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in Santa Clara County.
You're welcome, Sophia. And I have issued a proclamation declaring the month of March as Youth Arts Month in the City of Campbell, and we will get the proclamation to you by way of mail.
Thank you so much.
Comments from my colleagues on the council? Councilmember Scuzzola?
Yes, I'm so glad about this. Me being someone who was very active in the arts in my youth, I'm so happy to see this. I can attest that the arts are truly magical. I've seen so many things happen, so many people, maybe not me, I've always been a loud mouth, but other people that, you know, just breaks them out of their shell, you know. People are able to communicate in different ways. Art is so critical. One of my favorite things ever was the recommendation that STEM be turned into STEAM and including the arts. It's so crucial. It changes hearts and minds, and I'm very happy to see this this month. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you again, Sophia. Oh, our speaker is not working. Okay. So, we do have no communications and petitions this evening, and I want to report that there was no reportable action from the executive session that was held earlier. So, we're now on to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action on such items, however, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And I have one speaker card from Amy Taylor. If you'd like to come to the podium, please.
Hello. Good evening. So, again, for the record, I'm Amy Taylor, Campbell resident and owner of Cloud City Supply in downtown Campbell. So, I've been talking a fair amount about progress in speaking to the city council, and I've posed the question about what legacy would you like to leave behind from your time as city council member? And I'm wondering if any of you know or recall that in 2016, Sunset Magazine did a fair amount of research on the best suburbs in the West, and Campbell was named a runner-up. Not bad, considering competition from our neighboring wealthy communities like Los Gatos, Saratoga, and Cupertino. Notable in justifications for the runner-up honor for Campbell, the fact that this city is filled with actually so many things to do for every generation. So, how many communities can actually say that? So, again, right, progress for the City of Campbell. So, why can't we build on this strong foundation of community and continue the legacy of Campbell appealing to all ages and walks of life? Medical and recreational cannabis use demographics, while not evenly distributed across generations, do point to broad appeal from Gen Z all the way through to the baby boomer generation. So, let's give everyone one more great reason to come to Campbell by making the sale of marijuana-based products legal in our city. So, again, to the city council, please consider developing and voting on a marijuana ordinance for the City of Campbell. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Amy. Councilmember Lopez?
I know we can't comment or discuss, of course. Could we have staff follow up if appropriate?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak under oral request? And I don't see anybody online. So, we'll move on to council announcements, and I have several tonight. March is Women's History Month. This is a time to honor the women who have made important sacrifices and contributions to society in both the past and present. The 2023 theme is celebrating women who tell stories, which recognizes women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. Though the list is long, some popular historical figures who are recognized during the month of March are Maya Angelou, Maxine Hong Kingston, Toni Morrison, Gloria Steinem, and Betty Soskin. The blood center industry is facing a real challenge today with the sustainability of the blood supply. The number of blood donors is shrinking, while the need for blood at hospitals has increased significantly over the last several years. To that end, Stanford Blood Center is working on a project called Year of First to help raise awareness for this program and encourage local community members to donate for the first time in 2023, providing hope for healing for patients at Bay Area hospitals and beyond. There is a Stanford Blood Center located at 295 East Hamilton Avenue in Campbell. Please make an appointment today at stanfordbloodcenter.org, on the SBC app, or by calling 888-723-7831. The Campbell Police Foundation is hosting a fundraising breakfast on Saturday, March 25, from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. at the Home Church on Winchester Boulevard in Campbell. Tickets are $25 per person and can be purchased at campbellpolicefoundation.org. The Civic Improvement Commission awards grants up to $500 per neighborhood for activities and projects that address the quality of life, safety, cleanliness, and engagement throughout neighborhoods. The 2023 Neighborhood Association Assistance Grant application period is now open and will close at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, March 31. To find out more about this grant opportunity or to apply, please visit campbellca.gov. The AARP Tax Aid Program will provide income tax assistance free of charge through April 14 at the Campbell Community Center. The AARP Tax Aid Program provides tax assistance to anyone free of charge with a focus on taxpayers who are over 50 and have a low to moderate income. The Campbell Summer Recreation Activity Guide is available online. Registration for preschool for summer and fall begins at 10 a.m. on Tuesday, March 14 and 15. Campbell Recreation Scholarship Fund helps support the Recreation Scholarship Fund, allowing Campbell youth to participate in recreation. The Campbell Heritage Theater has an amazing lineup with the Capella sensation Votev, I'm not sure if I pronounced that right, on Friday, March 24, and Ladies Night with Taylor Dane and Sheena Easton on Thursday, April 27. For additional ticket information about this event and any other Campbell Community Center events, please visit campbellca.gov. So, now we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any councilmembers, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay.
I just wouldn't make comments. I didn't want to pull an item on comment nine, if that's appropriate.
Certainly.
Item nine is related to sales tax authorization. It doesn't effectuate councilmembers. I just want the council to know that I'm exploring a letter that the state will provide us a form for that will allow for councilmembers to have the same access to this data, and we'll do that by separate action. That's not on the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff under item number 12, the acceptance of the landscape conservation rebate from the valley water, and thank you, Todd, to you and your group. It goes to our strategic plan of sustainability, and, you know, my favorite topic is get rid of unfunctional lawn, so this falls right into that. So, thank you very much, and I can make a motion.
I have one other item or clarification. I just want to mention that there is a desk item on item 13, and the revised recommended action is that the city council adopt the resolution approving the reclassification of the vacant office assistant position to an accounting clerk two position by elimination of one vacant office assistant position and the addition of one accounting clerk two position. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 12 through 13 with the desk item for item 13.
Second.
You mean two? Two through 13?
Two through, didn't I say two?
You said 12.
12, two through 13.
Right. So, we have.
I accept the amendment.
So, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the consent calendar items two through 14, 13? 13. Mayor, roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Scuzzola.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Mayor Bybee.
Aye.
Item 14 is a public hearing, the 2022 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, APR. And to introduce the item is our community development director, Rob Eastwood.
Mayor Bybee, on behalf of councilmembers, I'm here to actually introduce Assistant Planner Larissa Lowen. She prepared the report, and she will provide a brief presentation to you. So, coming up, Larissa.
All right. Good evening. Okay. Thank you, and good evening. Each year, Campbell is required to prepare an annual progress report, or APR, on the city's housing element. In this report, you'll see a summarization of the city's housing units and their permitting status, and it will be given an overview of the standing of the city's policies and goals under the current housing element. To summarize the 2022 year, as you'll see on the slide, the City of Campbell entitled 80 new housing units, issued 68 building permits, and final 33 new units. Of the 68 building permits issued, you'll see that all 68 were above moderate income units. As an update on the city's remit progress over the eight-year reporting cycle starting in 2015 and ending in 2023, the city was allocated 933 housing units across the four distinct income levels that you'll see on the screen. This ranges from very low to above moderate income. As the city will now be completing this fifth reporting cycle, 100% of the units should have been realized at each income level. However, to date, the city has provided 5% of its very low income, 3% of its low income, 12% of its moderate income, and it has fallen short of its allocation. The city, however, has exceeded its above moderate income or market rate obligation, meeting 153% of that need. The APR also serves to capture the city's progress towards implementing programs and policies as prescribed within the housing element. While most of the programs and policies in the housing element are routine in nature, staff has highlighted the city's 2022 efforts to submit a draft housing element to HCD, adopt Chapter 21.25 into municipal code, which implements SB 9, the two-unit housing development bill, amend Chapter 21.23, which regulates 80 U's within the city, implementing AB 68, 881, 670, and SB 13, applied for funding to establish the Hamilton Area Precise Plan that promotes transit-oriented housing through a one Bay Area grant, and evaluated the city's housing program internally, and hired a consultant to externally audit the program as well. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution directing staff to submit the housing element annual progress report to the required state agencies. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Larissa. Are there any questions on the council? Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes, thank you for that presentation, and I don't know if you can help address my question, or Rob. What can we do to basically encourage developers to be putting in the housing into the low and very low income? I know we don't build housing, but is there some incentive program that we could be investigating, whether it be subsidized fees for permits for the very low, low? Is there anything we can do to help in those two categories?
Well, that's, that question could have a long answer. And I guess I'll start by saying a lot of the policies and programs we put into the element are targeted at that. So, a couple of the ones we've highlighted that we will bring back to you once the housing element is adopted is the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, intended to incentivize affordable housing developers to come in and produce more affordable housing units. Another work plan item, it's on our work plan this year, we want to bring back to you, is relooking at our inclusionary housing ordinance and also a commercial linkage fee ordinance. Both of those would act to provide funds or increase the number of inclusionary housing units. We are working closely with some affordable housing developers. As you know, we have an application pending for the VTA site, and we do have at least two religious institutions that have declared an interest on doing 100% affordable on their property. Last but not least, I think that the major milestone ahead is us gathering probably a financial resources, which we have some of. And most cities that are serious about getting in the affordable housing business actually have skin in the game. They have funds available in their affordable housing fund. They do often release those funds to affordable housing developers and help underwrite affordable housing development. So, there's a number of tools. As you've seen the past eight years, we hope will be no reflection on the next eight years. We are totally rebooting the tools that we're using, but those are some of them that we're looking at.
Follow-up question. When you said there are some funding from other surrounding cities, are they to help with the permitting fees or contribution to construction?
General, general to latter. Yeah, the biggest fund regionally right now, which most councilmembers are probably aware of, is the Measure A for County Affordable Housing Fund that's helping underwrite the VTA site. But generally, cities or counties that have affordable housing trust funds or funds use that to underwrite the development of the project, the construction of the project. Typically, there are provisions where a city will come in and reduce fees for affordable housing development. Again, that's another tool Campbell can look at.
And have we looked at what that might cost us? Because I know we're looking at cost recovery on permits.
Not that yet specifically. Yeah, that would be, I mean, to date, Campbell has not yet had an 100% affordable housing application, but soon we'll have to build out consideration of how, if we do, and how would we reduce fees for affordable housing projects.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Fertado?
Yes, thank you, Rob, for that report. And I just wanted to echo what the vice mayor said. Yes, and it is a, it is a challenge. I know we're all concerned about affordable housing. I will say one thing, which is obvious, I know already to all of us. The numbers, of course, over the last few years have been very low, but we were also in the middle of COVID, and that really stopped a lot of progress in a lot of areas. Most developers And that really stopped a lot of progress in a lot of areas. Most developers, you know, just kind of cut way back. So that certainly, you know, affected us as well as all cities. But I'm I'm glad to see that we're going to try to make positive efforts and incentivize and encourage affordable housing. So I know it's an area that the city has always been, you know, concerned about and tried to be in front of. And that for many years, we have had about fifty percent individual private housing and fifty percent multifamily housing. So we've tried to meet that even before RINA existed. So I know we're going to continue to do our best and and I just wanted to echo my comments and say thank you and we still have a lot of work to do. There was a time where in the RINA numbers in previous years, those cities that felt that they didn't have adequate space to build some affordable housing could donate some of their funds to another city and sort of share in some of that. I don't imagine that program still exists anymore, but this is really a question on my part.
I believe the, it's, I can't remember the term. My former jurisdiction, we at the county, we had this with Palo Alto, where you can actually relocate some of your RINA. I think that provision still exists in the law. I just haven't seen it used very often.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll open the public hearing. And I have a couple requests from the public to speak. First is Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So two things I wanted to touch on really quickly. The first was, and this is more kind of directed towards staff. I know that in previous housing element conversations, we've talked about ADUs. There's been other cities that have attributed the production of ADUs for very low, low and moderate income. And this past year, there was only, I think, fifteen single houses that were built in 2022, but fifty-three ADUs. So I don't know if it's possible that the city can actually take credit. And it's not deed restricted ADUs, but they're basically by design. And then the second point that I wanted to make was, and it went to kind of the vice mayor's question, and I have some experience in this. How to get more very low and low income units. I've seen other cities and I've and I've talked to this council before about utilizing sometimes in Lufi's because of the city has money. The biggest concern with nonprofit developers is the cost of the land. And if that's subsidized or even given to them for free with money that they can get from the city, they can take a one acre piece of property for, say, seven or eight million dollars. They're competing against market rate developers. And then they develop an entire, you know, below market rate type project. And that would be your very low and low, which they get funding also from the state and federal government. So it's a great way to get more units built in the city of Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker, Stephen Saunders.
Certainly, we'll bring the table, the RINAP table back up, progress table. Hello, Stephen Saunders, Campbell resident, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. We looked at the same table last year and I got up and said bad things about it. I can say those bad things again, but really it's reassuring to see your Director Eastwood say we're got a reboot. Things are going to look better over the next eight-year cycle. But they've looked so bad over the last eight-year cycles. I really would like the council to maybe look at this more often than once a year. You don't have to do the whole silly report, but something that comprises this table. So that the council, at least every six months, I don't know, up to you, more often, you get a picture, are we yet making progress? Do we need to look at something else? Because frankly, we need to look at something else or those numbers are going to turn out the same. I wish you all luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? And I don't see anybody online. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and or a motion. Councilmember Lopez.
Sure, I just have comments. I appreciate both of our commenters on on this side very much. The the numbers speak for themselves and, you know, as as was said, very similar to the last year. I I want to focus less on on the past and a more on these conversations we're looking ahead because as as Director Eastwood says, we are looking at doing things differently. And, you know, I'd be very concerned if we were doing the same things and expecting a different result. That's not going to happen, but I I do think that we're doing the right things. I do expect to get periodic updates pretty frequently once some of that is in place, but it's going to be a longer. There'll be some time as we develop what those programs are. So I I just look forward to those discussions. I'm really proud of the work that that we're doing to change what what the table looks like in in future cycles and future years. And I appreciate all the hard work that that's being done.
Thank you. Any other council members? Vice Mayor Landry?
No, I can make a motion though.
Thank you.
I make a motion that the city council take the following actions. Receive public comment, which we did, accept the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, and adopt a resolution directing staff to send the annual progress report to the required state agencies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez. Could we have roll call? Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Aye.
Mayor Bybee.
Aye.
This brings us to item fifteen with, which is the acceptance of donation from Shaun's K-9. And presenting will be Police Captain Ian White.
Got it right this time. All right, Mayor Bybee, council members, thank you for your time. Let me have a short presentation for you. And then I'll move into the actual report. All right. So far, we're working. Okay, um, so tonight we're presenting our canine program to you as a background to how we use these dogs, how we train with these dogs and kind of how they're deployed in the field. And then and then we'll also discuss the donation of the canine to, the new canine to our program. I wanted to start with kind of handler selection. So when we look at a canine program, one of the things that we do is, and one of the things that's a mark of a good program is how do you select your handlers and 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 are you very selective as as to who you choose to take on this big responsibility? I think the one thing that both Chief Berg and I recognize is that these dogs are a huge responsibility and that you need very competent people to handle them and to be able to work them in your community. So we have Agent McGee right now with Canine Lucas and Officer Scott Bukovic with Canine Coa. Both officers were selected because of their good decision and and judgment. Both officers have experiences, field training officers. And both both officers had previously been recognized for their work in the field and their knowledge of case law and and understanding of use of force issues. So that is really the beginning of the process for us is it's really pairing the right person with the dog. And we'll get into our detection program. So both dogs are are trained in firearms and and Canine Coa is trained in explosives and and detection as well. So I'm going to give you guys just kind of a glimpse of what detection in the field looks like. This search was related to a search warrant that our detective bureau did behind a case of a burglary of a jewelry store in downtown Campbell of over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of jewels. The suspect in this incident was also suspected of a shooting in San Jose. And what you're going to see in a minute, they're going to lift up what looks like a book, but it's actually a hidden safe. And that's what the dog had indicated on. So inside that book is a safe. And the next slide, those two guns at the top were located at the residence by the canine. The guns in the lower photo and gun parts and the say, or in the storage container to the right were from a case on Ridgely where a individual who was involved in methamphetamine use was suspected of selling and and manufacturing firearms and selling them to people who were not allowed to possess them. So as you can see, with these cases, these dogs are a huge asset. As you saw with the home that they were in searching, very often those homes are very cluttered and these guns are not very big and they're very difficult to find. And these dogs have been a great asset for us and and also in the field. So one of the other things that on patrol, these dogs sent guns in a car as well. It's become an officer safety benefit for us to have them out in the field. And I know you guys have been aware, you see our postings, our social media postings and have been made aware by staff. The increase in gun seizures that we've seen on the street is nothing I've ever seen. I know that you guys have been made aware of that, but these dogs are something I would say now more than ever with this type of ability is something that we really need to continue to to move forward. So then our apprehension, I know that's going to be a a subject of conversation, but this is from our policy. And I know if we discuss other issues here, our policy is available to the public online, our complete policy unredacted, including our canine policy, but the these are our apprehension guidelines. So the only time that a dog would be utilized for apprehension purposes is there's a reasonable belief the suspect poses an imminent threat of violence or serious harm to the public, any officer or the handler. The suspect is physically resisting or threatening to resist arrest and the use of a canine reasonably appears to be necessary to overcome such resistance. The suspect is believed to be concealed in an area where entry by other than the canine would pose a threat to the safety of officers or the public. This was some video footage. It's hard for us to show you actually investigation investigative incidents because they're ongoing. But I wanted to give you guys a glimpse of what apprehension looks like in the field, the control that these officers have of the dogs in the field. So this was our open house day. We had a great turnout from the public and you'll see the proximity of the public to the canines as well. I think it's just a good perspective of of how well-trained these dogs are. So in that instance, he called Lucas off. And I will mention that all of these dogs go through a post-training standard. So there is a post-standard that they have to be certified in every year that requires that they pass certain tests, a call-off and coming off the bite or two of those tests. So and in this, in this event, what you saw was a demonstration of what happens when a suspect starts to attack the handler. The officer was searching him, the suspect turned, started attacking him, and then the dog responded with a apprehension. So some of the benefits of this program, it it really is a less lethal tool. It allows our officers to search and apprehend suspects who present a threat. It deescalates, often results in the subject surrendering without force having to be used. And it allows us to search large areas and search for dangerous subjects who have fled the scene of a crime. And if you've ever been involved in like a bank robbery where someone runs and you're doing yard to yards, I can't emphasize enough how important having a dog who can track and detect someone who's concealing themselves is. And I'll just talk about some of our statistics. And I think the one that's most telling is suspects were almost four times more likely to surrender during apprehension deployments than to be bit by the canine. In the seven thousand calls since 2019, when we started the canine program, they've only been deployed for apprehension purposes in point nine percent of the time of those calls, and they've only used force in point zero nine percent of the time. So that's really, we're talking about seven bites, three of those incurred in other jurisdictions who were calling for assistance. And all of them were involving dangerous individuals who had various crimes such as felony assault on an officer, fleeing and hiding after a felony assault on an officer. So and I will say, of those seven bites, all resulted in minor injuries, all were quickly released from the hospital and booked. And in only one instance, a suture was applied to one of the wounds. So the the level of injury because of the way that these dogs are trained is is minimal as well. So and then I think that, you know, this kind of hearkens back to what Cheryl said earlier about these dogs. They're so much more than their teeth. And this program has been an amazing benefit for our community as well. I think our canine officers, I didn't pull that data, but the number of community events far outweighs the number of enforcement bites or or deployments. And when we talk about canine selection, and this is kind of where I wanted to talk about canine selection. When Agent Najib McGee was promoted in January of twenty-two, we knew we would probably eventually have to replace his dog with a new handler just because of his supervisory responsibilities and the potential he might get moved around. And we notified Cheryl, talked about it, talked to our training group, asked about searching for a dog. Our dogs have to be community-oriented dogs and and able to work with our community. It's taken us over a year to find a suitable dog that meets the drive that we need to do that work and the sociability that it takes to be present in our community and participate in these events. So when I say we take this program very seriously, and and again, I'll speak somewhat for Chief Berg as well. I think it's one of the things we're very like, I had to say something I'm most proud of that we've done. I think this program is one of them. And so when we take the selection of a handler and a dog, it's it's taken seriously. And we take our time. And what I said to our vendors was, however long it takes to find the right dog, I'm not in a rush. And it took a year, was longer than I thought, but that that's the realities of what we're trying to, the program that we're trying to provide and the service that we're trying to provide to the the community. So that is it. I will take questions and then I can move to the to the recommendation from staff.
Are there any questions of Captain White? Councilmember Scazola?
More of a comment, why are the dogs not here for us to pet?
So there was a long conversation about the dogs being here, but we thought maybe three dogs looking at you guys would would apply pressure. And and so it's just, so you just got me tonight. But in the future, there, we will be happy to and 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 I know that other council members have come to the open house and I'm sure that's something we're going to do again. I would highly recommend. It's it's a great event. It's a really good way to gain understanding as to how these dogs work and what they do.
And in all seriousness, I'm really happy that this is happening and I'm glad it took a year to find the perfect dog and I'm so happy with the donation. And I hope that we have a strong canine program for the rest of Campbell's existence. It continues into the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yep, Vice Mayor Landry?
Two questions.
Yes.
Um, we were discussing earlier in the week with the city manager, there's some bill right now before the state regarding use of force with dogs. Are you, you're obviously tracking that and how will that affect it? If that does go through, how will that affect our program?
Well, I mean, so I'm I'm very hopeful that it doesn't go through. And I mean, I will say that much. You know, I I think that that when you look at our program and what we do here, it's hard to tell what you mitigate. All those instances of the seven bites I brought up, the use of force, these people were concealed inside of businesses, they were, had broken into people's residences. They had assaulted officers already. The level, and and you saw our our spectrum for when we would deploy these dogs. Those are serious events that, you know, the the person committing the offense determines the response, right? So there is a response guideline to when we can actually even use these these canines. And without them, now you have to send an officer in and the potential conflict. And when we talk about four times more likely to surrender when they see a dog, I can tell you, they don't even have to get out of the car. When that car pulls up that says canine unit on the side, the demeanor of an uncooperative person changes almost immediately. And and that's not a deployment. We don't count that, but that's just the car being there and people know there's a dog in the back of it. So I'm hopeful, you know, I think if if, as you've seen from our program, we get donations from Cheryl, the dogs' vests get donated to us. Um, I'm hopeful, you know, I think if if as you've seen from our program, we get donations from Cheryl, the dogs vests get donated to us. There's a tremendous amount of community support throughout the state for canine programs. And I think that, um, you know, everyone can tell a story, but it's not the whole story. And and I think what we've shown you tonight and what Campbell PD does here tells a a complete story of of how we operate our canine program.
I, you know, I support you guys.
Yeah.
I was just more curious how it would affect if that does go through, because it talks about use of force with the dogs.
Yeah, we would only be able to deploy them for detection at that point if that if that bill went through, which as I said before, and unfortunately. The the preponderance of illegal guns that we're finding is concerning and these dogs are a huge asset in that area as well, so I mean, my. My recommendation to you guys would be that we would continue to deploy them for that purpose and not. Deploy them for enforcement, but my hope would be that's not the case.
And where are they going in the new building? Do we have a doggy van?
I believe there's some some areas designed, I'm not a hundred percent on that. That's not my wheelhouse.
Okay, I was, it was more of a joking type of comment, but thank you. And this means we need to add another cape, right?
Heard one was on order, so.
Councilmember Fertado?
I'd just like to say first of all, thank you for your um, very excellent presentation. And I think it's very rewarding to all of us, the fact that your standards are published, they're public. Um, the policies are very clear, uh, people as well as the dogs are very well, um. The dogs are very well-trained, the individuals understand well the standards and requirements, and I think. Un- unfortunately, there are a lot of people, uh, not in this city but elsewhere that result in the kind of legislation we were referring to that sometimes like to jump to conclusions and. And don't um, appreciate, uh, y- you know, well-written and real organized policies and I'm I'm glad that we do and you're sensitive to that too. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any members of the public that wish to speak on the item? And anybody online? So if you would proceed to the.
I'll proceed.
Staff recommendation and council report, please.
Yes, alright, um, I will keep this brief. You already spoke on the Sean Walsh Foundation. I do want to highlight that, um. Uh, although they didn't buy Lucas, they've adopted Lucas, um. But uh, they've been very supportive of our program and programs throughout the county and and we can't thank them enough for their continued support. And as you guys seen from the council report, we've done a lot to try and mitigate the costs around this program to be able to continue it forward. What we would like to ask for and and what we're proposing in the council report is that. Um, Canine Lucas and Agent McGee bring a lot of experience to this program. These dogs continue to train together and it's going to take some time. Uh, to get this new dog uh, uh, up to speed. And so we are hoping that uh, based on his continued contrib- contribution to the program that staff. Is requesting that council approve the continued use of Canine Lucas through fiscal twenty-four. And also that the city council adopt a ru- resolution to accept the donation of a police canine from Sean's canines. For the Campbell Police Department and approve the continued use of Canine Lucas.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? So, uh, Councilmember Lopez?
Um, yeah, a couple things. First off, thank you for the excellent presentation. I really answered all all the questions that that I had. Um, so it's deeply appreciated. Um. I I will say as as one of the two members of the legislative subcommittee, I hope we can keep track of this legislation and um. You know, we we can talk more about it later, but there may be ways for for us to weigh in, you know, as Councilman Fertado said. I I think it's more constructive to share if we have a positive approach that is working. Um, you know, maybe there are ways we we can share that experience and and tell a different story. Um, because you know, I'm I'm sure there's many stories in other jurisdictions that that don't have policies or that have a history of of issues. Um, but um, we we don't want to lose this really strong program that that we have and. Um, that that that's really where where I want to turn to and and say, um, thank you for for the donation and. What an incredible way to honor the the memory um, of your son. It's not just the one-time donation, it's not just the donations in in the past, but. Um, as you spoke to the ongoing relationship and and really partnership that we've been able to have. Is having such an incredible impact on the community and and as others have said that, um, I. The like, community, it it's it's the whole program is done in a way that fits the spirit of of our police department and the spirit of Campbell. Um, and being so community-oriented, um, that's really something special to celebrate. Um, and I I really see us as as leaders in that area, so so thank you. Um. I I do have a question about the recommendation. Um, I I only see in the rec- uh. Oh, never mind, I actually, I I see this now, so um, no, no questions, that took care of it.
Anyone else?
Dan, did you have comment?
No. Alright, thank you again for the presentation. You guys all know I support this program and. Uh, based on what Councilmember Lopez just said, I think it is important for us to tell our story. And go to the legislators and talk to them about our positive stories. You had some great videos of how they can stop the potential. Uh, getting the person that they have the commands and that kind of stuff, so anything that we can do to um. Affect this legislation, I think would be important and thank you again for all your continued donations and. Your son would be very proud.
And I want to re- reiterate to the generous donation and thank you very much. I know it's not the first time and I'm I'm sure that um. There'll be another one along along the way, um, and I I really am appreciative of the selective process that we have. In in matching the dog and the officer and um, welcoming welcoming them into our community. It's not just someone, a dog off the street, so um, I do appreciate that. With that, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I don't see anybody jumping in, so I'm gonna jump in. I recommend that the city council adopt a resolution to accept the donation of a police canine from Sean's canines. For the Campbell Police Department and approve the continued use of Canine Lucas through fiscal year twenty-four.
Second.
How about Councilmember Scazola? So there was. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmembers Scazola. Could we have a roll call? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Thank you again and thank you Captain White. And that takes us to item sixteen, which is also your item, accept grant funds from the state homeland security grant program. Authorize the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Santa Clara County regarding the use of the funds dispensed with bidding procedures. As specified in Campbell Municipal Code Section three point twenty point oh three oh subsection seven. And award and execute an agreement with AT&amp;T for the purchase of first net compact rapid deployable. CRD emergency communications equipment and authorize a corresponding budget adjustment.
Alright, let me see if I can. There we go, okay. Alright, uh, thank you again, Madam Mayor, council members, uh, I'm up again and. I I wanted to give you guys just a glimpse of what a first net compact rapid deployable was, because. I think it's hard to read about and not understand, but it is a deployable cellular and satellite tower. Um, this is as a result of a um. Study on redundancy that we did based upon a lot of our systems going into the cloud. Um, we also, at the time that we purchased uh, the mobile emergency operations center, there wasn't enough funds to place a satellite on the top. I think fortunately, this this is a much more versatile versatile. A piece of equipment and performs at a much higher rate than a satellite mounted on top of a bus and and it's gonna provide us with a lot of flexibility in the event. Of communications loss. Um, just to give you a size uh, perspective. This unit can run off of a a regular outlet and you can place the dish and antenna on top of a roof in the event that a building. Lost connectivity, uh, you could basically uh, restart connectivity and cellularite cellul- cellular signal anywhere. So these are used frequently in the fires. Um, this was, this was uh, proposed in our grant as a, also a mutual aid resource. Uh, as we know, we've had several wire wildfires where connectivity in in the Santa Cruz Mountains has not been good and we've aided. Um, on those deployments, so. Um, we were awarded the grant when we applied for it, as as all things, it was well over a year ago and the price was slightly different. Um, and when we finally got the grant funds and are able to use them, uh, inflation caught us a little bit, so I know in the in the fiscal impact report you received. There's an adjustment uh, based on really a cost uh, change that we couldn't predict for. And um, I did ask for additional grant funding, but they'd all been awarded at that point. Um, so this would allow us to continue nine-one-one operations anywhere. Um, which is important at this point with the technology that we have, we would have to transfer that responsibility to the county. Um, which depending on the type of event, it could cause problems for our residents. Um, and this would also be a shared asset with fire, um, CERT is on first net and we could elevate them to be able to receive connectivity in the men of. In the event of a major emergency, and so that's the, that is the rundown, the benefits, fully functional first net. Um, it's a mobile cellular device, connects you to the cloud, deployable by a single person, goes right to the incident. Many uses not just first net, it does have the ability to carry other carriers. Um, and no special needing, training needed and simple to use. Um, it's for emergency response, remote internet connectivity. Business continuity, recovery, restore internet service, supply internet to other units and support. Uh, voiceover IP phones, which we also use here, and then backup your dispatch center. Happy to take any questions if you have them and then I can give you our recommendation.
Councilmember Fertado?
I just have one question. I- is there a particular range that this uh, unit operates under?
Yeah, and I don't have the specs in front of me, but I believe it creates like a thousand-foot bubble. Um, you can have over a hundred users on it. Um, so it's it's fairly, um, it's fairly uh, robust. And I think the cell signal goes quite a bit farther than that, but the the actual wifi bubble is about a thousand feet, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item? And I don't see anybody online. So I will move on to or bring it back to council for discussion and our motion. Count, oh, uh, Vice Mayor Lo- I mean, excuse me, Councilmember Lopez?
I I I just have a comment, um. As you've heard me say before, I think it it's really great that we continue to be um, so on top of going after available grant funding. Um, it's unfortunate that, you know, the inflation got us, but that that's really such a minor. Um, a cost relative to what we're getting said and the benefit of it to the community, so. As you know, as we're only gonna probably see more and more of of these kind of emergency situations, so um, just appreciate us continuing to go after that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Scazola, you ready to make the motion now?
Yeah, I feel like I have to jump to it now, yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, so I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from the state. Homeland Security Grant Program, authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding. With the County of Santa Clara regarding the use of those funds dispensed with bidding procedures. As specified in Campbell Municipal Code, Section three point two zero point zero three zero seven. And award and execute an agreement with AT&amp;T for the purchase of first net compact rapid deployable CRD. Emergency communications equipment and authorizing a corresponding budget adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nope. So we have a motion by Councilmember Scazola and a second by Councilmember Fertado. Could we have roll call, please? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Thank you, Captain White.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to unfinished business and we have none tonight, and so now that will bring us to item seventeen, which is council committee reports. And I've been looking for a volunteer to, someone to go first. Okay?
Alright, you guys are all just so hot to the button there, you know?
Vice Mayor Landry?
Uh, did I mention last time about my ride-along with the police? I did, okay. I was gonna say how wonderful it was seeing and using all the technology. Um, I did not have committees, but I did go to the community center on Saturday for the Parks and Rec. Uh, open house. It was, uh, I thought I enjoyed it. There were activities there for really young kids regarding coding and I had no idea what that was and I played with the little toys and. I thought, okay, I think I need to take that little young kids class for me. And then I also attended the opening ceremony of the ice cream.
Humphrey and Slocombe.
Yes, at uh, the Poon Yard, uh, national brand of ice cream and I. Look forward to making sure they're a successful business. Thank you.
Councilmember Fertado?
I just wanted to report on the fact that I attended the um, downtown Campbell Business Association uh, meeting this past week. And uh, they have several activities planned. I I think you're probably aware of some of them and. Um, one includes the annual CERT fundraiser, uh, where the various businesses downtown provide foods to those who come and. Donate, of course, funds for the, are very well-respected and successful CERT program. Uh, they're also planning to once again, uh, have their wine walk on one of the evenings. Um, and then uh, a new event that they're hoping to um, plan for and have approved is um. A car show downtown on one of the weekends in July. So um, I think it's nice when we're able to uh, support a number of events to highlight. Uh, the activities that go on downtown. Um, I realize that uh, there are several. Um, businesses located throughout the city. Uh, the downtown sort of serves as a hub and it's an important element. Uh, and I think all of the merchants and uh, those who have businesses there are very much, you know, excited about promoting downtown. Uh, as a whole, which speaks well to our city and uh, they, there was also a brief discussion about the um. Grant process uh, for the the pilot, uh, or I should say that for the parklets and um. Uh, some of the businesses uh, present at the meeting had applied and so on, and so I know that's making its progress, so it's a good group, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to go next. Um, last week um, was was a big one. Um, I I had the um. Strategic Planning Retreat for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which was an all-day session in in Emeryville. Um, which was a lot of fun, um, which is where our uh, chair is from this year. Um, and really powerful event that was really centered around hearing from community and really doing things in a different way for for a public agency. Um, in including representatives from uh, a local indigenous tribe and. Uh, homeless advocates and um, uh, other community focus groups. Um, and in some cases delivering very challenging but important truths um, to um, those of us with. Um, who who are in a place makes some of these decisions that that impacts so many folks. Um, so really great work, a really exciting um, year ahead. Um, and in in about a week's time or so, we'll be having a big discussion on um, electrification. Which uh, I think is gonna be relevant for some of the future work that we do here, um, whether it's with a um, uh. Well, I, you know, I I don't need to restate it, but as we discussed at our priority setting session, plenty of work um, around sustainability. Um, where uh, you know, probably helpful for for us to stay in touch and and follow what happens there. Um, and then um, all all I think probably all our board meetings are are going back in person, so I had uh, VTA Board of Directors. Um, in in person as well as a um, workshop the early the following morning. Um, to get kind of an orientation, um, and ask a lot of questions about the the part phase two extension and and what that's gonna look like. Um, as as well as learning about some of the work uh, that they're doing on bicycle pedestrian uh, planning, which. Um, of course is very relevant for for our city and um, our community development department. And um, Public Works Department, I know are looking uh, closely at at that, so we'll continue to to monitor that.
Councilmember Scazola?
My committee meetings are later this week, so get you next time.
Um, I just wanted to report, I, in addition to the um. Ice cream shop, I did attend the rib- ribbon cutting for Flora, which is a new business in downtown Campbell, a health and wellness store. And um, they've really done a nice, really nice job inviting space, so I would encourage people to stop in and do a little shopping. Uh, I attended the Friends of the Heritage Theater meeting, uh, legislative subcommittee meeting with Councilmember Lopez and um. Also attended the Recreation Open House and um, threw out the first pitch at the Campbell Fast Pitch opening day on Saturday and. Pleased to say I did not embarrass my family name or the city of Campbell. I got the ball over the plate. And it was not a strike, but at least the catcher caught it, so.
I I can vouch for that, she did very good.
And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.